Okay, welcome back. We are joined by the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Small Business, Business Agency, and we are going to have a presentation from Director Lundie at this time.
Good afternoon, committee and council members. Thank you to my outstanding SMB AND team for your dedication to small businesses. They've allowed us to do even more for the business community. The creation of SMB AND came in an opportune moment to provide this assistance. When we confer for colleagues across the country, it becomes clear that not every jurisdiction has an agency dedicated to supporting small business. Diversity compliance programs like our MWB program under the leadership of Deputy Vanessa Freund or under TAC across the nation. In Baltimore, we know that despite this trend, there is still a great ongoing need for a remedial civil rights program. I am fortunate that Mayor Scott is a strong supporter of the need for the opportunities that the MWB program provides. We are fighting with our oral advocacy, but also with the assistance of our esteemed Solicitor Ebony Thompson and the excellent Law Department to maintain valuable resources like our Minority Business Development Agency Advanced Manufacturing Center. In FY24, SMB AND increased the number of city-certified MWBEs by 185 year-over-year, oversaw the review and approval of 1,732 submissions, totaling over $3.48 billion in procurement contracts. We offered 137 business development webinars, in addition to hosting the city's procurement conference and welcoming the Ninth Main Street in Park Heights to the Baltimore Main Streets BMS program. Our active contracts resulted in approximately $20.8 million paid to MBEs and $6.9 million paid to WBEs. We cannot do it without our contractors and vendor business partners. It is so fantastic to see businesses grow to greater heights due to public procurement. There have been multiple rounds of agency trainings on how to utilize our process for pre- and post-of-war compliance reviews. We've made multiple revisions to the MWBE bidder commitment forms to eliminate common mistakes within bids that resulted in a decrease in protests. We will be continuing training on completing MWBE bidder commitment forms to further businesses' comprehension of how to successfully bid for opportunities. We want to see businesses succeed and take advantage of the opportunities that already exist with city procurement. The BMS program is united in their mission to empower Baltimore's small businesses through strategic mentorship, resources, and hands-on collaboration to revitalize our communities. Under the leadership of Director Nader, there has been intentionality in working in our historically underserved communities. We have been working in Park Heights extensively to deploy needed PCDA resources for businesses in the community. We are in the process of helping several businesses that are receiving facade and development grants. Additionally, we'll be providing lighting and safety enhancements throughout the community. We assisted Pennsylvania Avenue to secure chase funding and are actively working in partnership to fill commercial vacancies in the community. In Bella Edison, we've brought together city stakeholders, the Main Street, and community members to address issues and concerns of the community. Our partners at SAO, BPD, and our city service agencies have been extremely helpful in these efforts. Our local businesses support our communities, employ our neighbors, and revitalize our neighborhoods by serving local needs with an inherent connection to the community. The BMS program is a broad program that covers all aspects of neighborhood revitalization. The program follows the Main Street America approach centered around transformation strategies organized as four points: economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. The BMS program would not be possible without our partners, the neighborhood Main Street directors, managers, and boards in our nine Main Streets located in Highland Town, Pennsylvania Avenue, Bella Edison, Hamilton-Loraville, Park Heights, Fels Point, Pig Town, Federal Hill, and Waverly. The partnership, hard work, and support of these community leaders are pivotal. We are fortunate to have this group. Through our public-private partnership with each Main Street community organization, we're engaging in placemaking initiatives and transformation strategies to ensure that people discover the beauty, history, and rich contributions of all of Baltimore. We are advising businesses to remain focused upon gaining skills, experience, and connections to grow in advance. I'll continue to be an advocate, and SMB AND is committed to bringing unprecedented resources and systems to ensure ease of use of access to resources and increase compliance with the MWB program. Our development efforts are under the leadership of Deputy Stephen Campbell. This spring, we completed our 10-week speaker series covering topics on accounting, marketing, mergers and acquisitions, the current workforce environment, and more. I look forward to hosting the Baltimore City Small Business Advancement Conference upcoming, not this Thursday, next Thursday, on June 12th at the Baltimore Convention Center. Please visit our website for opportunities to be an exhibitor, sponsor, or just simply to RSVP to attend at no cost. This will be the place for education, opportunities, and networking. We've got a host of city agencies, local universities, banks, and state agencies that'll be there, providing opportunities and providing resources for the community. In response to needs the community, we launched Catalyst Baltimore. The program provides technical assistance to increase expertise in areas such as accounting, marketing, cash flow management, human resources management, technology development, and government procurement. Businesses are matched with a list of possible local resource providers based on business needs. Catalyst Baltimore provides critical consulting support that they would be unable to independently afford. We intend to continue providing business consulting for these vital needs in FY26. We remain focused upon solving business needs and creating resilience. Some needs are educational, which we address via the Small Business Resource Center and MBDA Advanced Manufacturing Center, while others are grounded in providing opportunities via the MWB program's goal-setting and compliance monitoring. This supports real people that took risks and followed their dreams. Whether they provide services or goods, what they do is valuable. They are unsung heroes to inspire others to pursue their passions. Turning to our mission, the Mayor's Office of Small and Minority Business Advocacy and Development works to provide opportunities, technical assistance, and resources to our local small, minority, and women-owned businesses. This is advanced by our digitized process, which pursuant to Baltimore City Code Article 5, Section 2810, the agency is responsible for the administration of the Minority and Women's Business Program, or MWB program, to expand the number of MWBEs, monitor post-of-war contract MWBE utilization to ensure public procurement dollars benefit local businesses, provide diverse webinars and speakers at the Small Business Resource Center, manufacturing support from the Minority Business Development Agency's Advanced Manufacturing Center, and neighborhood revitalization via the Baltimore Main Streets, public-private partnership with our nine Main Street communities. In FY26, our first goal is to celebrate the anniversary of the Baltimore Main Streets program. This is going to be the 25th anniversary. We'll be working to highlight our placemaking work with the nine Main Streets. We'll be creating unique experiences and digital content throughout the year in partnership with the communities to highlight their rich and diverse character and drive Baltimoreans and visitors to the Main Streets. We have events for the whole family, like the ongoing Great Chase with fantastic raffle prizes from our Main Streets and other local businesses that's currently underway. The program has transitioned to increase partnership focusing upon placemaking efforts to increase people coming to shop, dine, spend time with their family, enjoy community parks, and entertainment. Each community has so much to offer, and we plan to highlight the community and their Main Street directors in our upcoming BMS podcast. The annual allocation to the Main Street communities has grown to 75,000 for each community, which we greatly appreciate and thank the administration and the council for all of the advocacy and support to get us to that place. We had the pleasure of hosting the Small Business Awards last month to honor some of our local Main Street businesses, and this was a much-deserved moment of recognition for the support that they give to our local economy. Goal number two for FY26, we're going to be evolving our business development resources. Again, this is all about improving ease of use. This will involve new content creation to make more resources readily accessible. This is going to be done in collaboration with a FUSE fellow that we're going to have for this upcoming fiscal year, and also software to be procured this fiscal year that's going to really streamline our resources, also in addition to the redesigned city website that is forthcoming. We continue to increase our efforts to train, conduct outreach to promote resources, and partner to increase our webinar, speaker, program, and conference offerings. We're working to create digital content with business owners and engage in social media campaigns to ensure they grow and remain in place. SMB AND is excited to continue to advance our ability to assist small businesses and revitalize our community via our placemaking efforts and strategies. Thank you for allowing me to provide this brief background on SMB AND's work. I encourage you to visit the website to review our most recent FY24 Annual Report for a much more detailed review of our agency's efforts. Thank you.
Did you want to discuss Service 834, which was within the presentation it was sent over?
I'm sorry, Chairwoman, could you repeat that?
Did you want to discuss Service 834, which was within your presentation that you sent over?
Yes, that's our only service, is 834.
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just used to like...
Oh, do you want me to run? Would you like me to continue with the... I'm a little paranoid about time, Chairwoman, because I've heard that we need to be restricted. Do you want me to run through the...
Oh, gosh, they got... Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
Would you like me to run in more detail through the performance measures?
Don't... No.
I can continue if you have time for me.
It's okay.
I didn't want to run over my 10 minutes.
Look, I appreciate y'all. I'm just going to say that. But, um...
I intend to please the chair.
Director Lundie, look, man, you can't both speak at the same time. But, no, it's okay. We're going to get straight into the questions, and I have one from Councilman Blanchard, so he's going to ask the first one. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Lundie, I want to congratulate you on finishing that presentation so quickly and getting to the questions. So, and first off, as someone who spent a lot of the time on a Main Street board and has a lot of thoughts on how to support that program specifically as Director Nader knows, this is something that I've been looking forward to this hearing and looking forward to partnering with this office in helping do this incredibly important service of helping our historic, like, this is something that historic small businesses in a place rooted in neighborhoods, like, no one else in the region or even the state can do anything like what we have the bones to do, and we got to figure out how to do it right. And when we do, it's going to be a huge win for such a diverse set of neighborhoods in the city. So, getting into the questions, and, you know, most of them are specific to the Main Streets. So, first off, probably a very quick one. I was hearing that there might be some of the Main Streets might not be renewing their contracts with Baltimore Main Streets this year. Is that... That is not accurate?
That would be the first that I've heard of that.
Okay.
Director Nader?
There's a little red.
Right side.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Councilman. At the moment, all of the Main Streets are going to be renewing their contracts for the upcoming fiscal year. They're overly excited about all of the opportunities that we're providing, and there is no Main Street that has shared that they will not be continuing to work with us and renewing their contract.
Okay. So, there's no plans from Baltimore Main Streets, and you are unaware of any plans from the individual Main Streets to not continue with the contracts?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Awesome. Glad to hear it. Glad to dispel that. So, next up, so something I've always been curious about. My understanding is Main Streets used to fall under Baltimore Development Corporation. I think it used to be an independent office, and now it's under Small Minority Business Advocacy and Development. Director, could you, and specifically for Director Lundie, can you explain what, like, why? Why would we want it to be... Because there's some amount of synergy, but, I mean, they're fairly distinct focuses. So, I'd be curious to hear your argument for why Main Streets should be under SMB.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. I think, for one, it's really that we've already shown the commitment and the capacity to run the program, to continue to invest in the program, to continue to collaborate with the community, to get better results. So, I think that, first and foremost, I'd like to put that out there. Secondarily, I think that the program, in terms of neighborhood revitalization, ties into everything we're trying to do in Baltimore from a business standpoint. It's that we're trying to bolster our small business community with both the membership with MWBEs via the Minority and Women's Business Program, public procurement, but also trying to educate folks so that they can start new businesses and have our existing business owners also transition to the Main Streets. So, when we're meeting with businesses at the Small Business Resource Center, when we're interacting, doing outreach, that we're actually actively recruiting businesses to go into those Main Streets. That's something we were able to assist in Highland Town recently with a fantastic business heart vision that was able to open their first physical brick-and-mortar location, and that was due to the receipt of project restore funds that we were able to help them with the application and also as they're moving through to try to get businesses out there. So, there's just a lot of synergy with the work that we do with businesses, with our engagement and connection with the community because of the locations throughout the city and the feedback we're able to get from them about the needs of that community.
Sure. And understood in the sense that being a connector from, you know, entrepreneurs who don't have a brick-and-mortar, obviously particularly either women-owned or minority-owned businesses, and being able to connect them in with, that certainly makes sense, and that's something that, you know, when you and I have our intro meeting, would love to... It makes sense theoretically. I'd be curious to see how that's actually being, you know, executed.
Of course.
And then my last question with all this. So, something that is of interest, I think, a lot of the Main Streets have, and a lot of, they have told me specifically, as well as I think a lot of council members have, is this concern around unoccupied retail space, particularly in, it's not just in Main Street footprints. Obviously, downtown is on my district. It's a huge problem in downtown. What role does, do you see your office playing, if any, right, in addressing... Because I know BDC has some efforts that they're looking at, and they're looking to chart, like, which places are unoccupied, and trying to just pull the data and everything. What do you see your office's role in that conversation being or not being?
Yeah. So, I definitely think we're involved with that. I think we have multiple roles. So, where you ended with the data piece, I think with our reporting that we get from the nine communities, looking, we've revamped the reporting that's going to be submitted to us on that quarterly basis, and now we also have a data officer on board that's going to be doing more of a statistical analysis of some of the trends that we can see throughout the city in the nine communities, but also looking at some of the trends individually in the neighborhoods. And we're going to be evaluating far more connected to the data in that way. I think also, in terms of the commercial vacancies, identifying some of the repeat property owners. I know in some locations in your district, also in other areas throughout the city, we'll have repeat landlords that own multiple commercial spots. And sometimes, I think one of the things that we can do in collaboration, and we have when we do some of our walks through the community in collaboration with DHC is highlighting those particular properties, and I think we can come up with a more targeted enforcement strategy that really goes after those high-volume, commercial vacant landlords.
I already have a couple folks in mind. Yeah. That's great to hear, and would, looking forward to discussing that. Certainly interested to hear what this data officer's work involves. And then I'll just, you know, as long as, and I don't know if this is a committee request, or I don't know if this is controlled by your office or by BBMR, who runs this, but the performance measures are all specific to small minority business advocacy development broadly and not touching into Baltimore Main Streets. I would, A, I think that the Main Street should be its own service within it and spelled out, so we see who's doing what and what the lineups are. And then within that, I also think that it should have its own performance measures that we're able to see, because I hear your point about there being a lot of synergy, but there's certainly a lot of distinction as well. And it's, all I see on here is some small minority business advocacy and development stuff, and then I see Main Streets. It is now broken out as an activity for FY26, which is great, but all I see is a single-dollar amount for this year, so.
Yeah, that is, I definitely appreciate that. So, I'll take the portion that we can take. Some of that is BBMR with the way the things are moved for this budget book specifically. But I know, in terms of the performance measures that we have currently, I will say, these are virtually pre-existing goals that I've been working to try to update, because these are really the goals that date back to when we were still a part of the Law Department, with the exception of the percentage of the procurement spend. And that is a measure that although we are very much involved in the procurement process, we very much are encouraging the spends with minority and women-owned businesses and all small businesses as primes and subcontractors on our city procurement, that's not a measure that's within our control, because we obviously, as an agency, have some procurement, but what the individual agencies and the pure procurement have is a lot of discretion in terms of who they choose to use, especially small spends, that we're doing that encouragement, we're doing that advocacy, we're doing the outreach.
I saw y'all's point.
But that's a measure that doesn't necessarily capture our work. But I will definitely be working to update the performance goals to be more reflective of the totality of our work, especially inclusive of Main Streets.
Let me just add that to our conversation agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, thank you all for the work that you do. First off, I just had a question regarding, like, Main Street and whether or not there's a plan for expansion of another Main Street, because on your website, it says, "Applications are not accepted on a rolling basis and will only be accepted during funding availability", which will be detailed later. But it said there is funding for one Main Street that was previously committed and is already in the process. I was just wondering, is that what is that Main Street, or is there one that you're planning? And is there future plans to open it up and expand it? Because I could think of a great place in District 12 for a Main Street that doesn't necessarily have a Main Street right now. So, thanks.
Councilman, thank you. Good afternoon. That is an excellent question. So, I believe the language that's there may be dated language that needs to be updated and been in our reconciliation between old version and new version of the website. I think that just might have been a carryover that slipped through. What that was referencing at, when it was current, was the funding that was already allocated for Park Heights, which we already onboarded last fiscal year. So, I would love to have many more Main Street communities, and I know Director Nader would as well. The reality that we run against and continues to be more challenging as we commit more resources to those communities is it continues to up the ask of what we need to bring onboard other communities. But I would love to be in a budget reality where we could do so, and we have the capacity to do so, we have the willingness to do so, but that's really our only constraint. I will say something that we are going to be moving towards with Director Nader is working on trying to identify communities throughout the city that have good infrastructure with their community organizations and could use better connections to city services. So, we want to be able to support those organizations, allow them to continue to advance, not have them feel like we're forgetting about them, even with our funding realities, but be able to help and push forward a lot of those organizations and communities. So, when we do get to a point that, whether that be 75, 150,000, whatever that lump sum is, that we could be granted at a future time, that we would already have communities identified that we're familiar with, that we've worked with, that are aware of what the Main Street America four-point approach is, what they would be asked of to be a part of the program, so we can smoothly move forward when that funding is available, and that's something we're going to be definitely moving towards. Now that we've, you know, made progress with Park Heights, we're going to be able to be in a position to be looking at how we can further help communities throughout the city, because we don't want, I don't know our precise number, but I believe we were at 299 neighborhoods, but we don't want, you know, 290 other or 289 other neighborhoods to feel as though they're left behind and not part of our agenda of what we're trying to provide in terms of resources to those communities.
And thank you for that clarification, because I would love to be a partner in having those conversations about how more resources can be dedicated so that, you know, we can have a more diverse group of Main Streets throughout the entire city, especially in District 12. So, my next question was in regards to minority women-owned businesses and that program, and how it's designed to, you know, provide opportunity. But there's also a lot of conversation regarding DEI on a federal level, and I understand, like, our Minority Women-owned Business Program has been in effect way before these DEI conversations happened. And is there worry that, you know, the administration could look at this program as like in the DEI kind of initiative thing, where in fact, it's completely different, you know, in some sense, but just wondering how your office is preparing in case, you know, the, try to look at that as that and, you know, impact the city?
Yeah. We're definitely in an environment where there's a lot of challenges to anything that's involving, typically, yeah, we are hearing the language of the DEI. But in terms of what we have with the Minority and Women's Business Program, it is a race and gender preference program that is a remedial civil rights program that's based on historical inequities and lack of utilization of those local minority and women-owned businesses. So, thus, we have, from the data as recent as our 2022 disparity study, that we have a significant number of minority and women-owned businesses that we're not utilizing at the level you would anticipate in our market area. So, we really have the data to support it, and we have, it's narrowly tailored in the legal standpoint to make it so that it's not over-inclusive. It only includes areas where we actually spend our money. One of the things that's going to be coming to the council in the upcoming months is actually a revision to the Minority and Women's Business Program. I've done the rewrite and gotten back a draft from Legislative Reference, and what those changes are looking to do is to reconcile some inconsistencies that are in the law, inconsistencies regarding things like emergency procurements, where there's actually two current clauses and provisions within the city code that are in conflict, and additionally, things such as the recommendations from the disparity study, which would recommend to expand the market area further into Prince George's and Montgomery Counties, and that's based on the spending that the city already does at that 70% and 75% level in those areas in addition to our existing market area. This would also slightly alter the annual utilization rates for MBE and WBE, which just memorialize a lot of the changes that they recommended that would really be best practices. So, we're trying to make the program stronger. We obviously have to support the administration to continue the program. The only thing that would be our roadblock and allow us to come to the end will be if the Supreme Court rules that there is no legal race or gender preference program that can exist in any form or fashion, then we would need to revise the program. So, we have begun thoughts about ways that we would continue to support that business community and other ways that we would be able to do things, but have not gone too extensively because it's a very fluid and dynamic situation. But we are prepared to pivot that portion of our work. But this is where I always like to remind folks that we already are a race and gender neutral agency. We assist all small businesses regardless of minority or gender status, but we have within our agency a minority and gender preference program in the MWB program. But it is not in any way setting aside any work. It's extremely competitive. Everybody must still submit their bids and be awarded and go through our competitive process with the city. So, that's where it really differentiates itself from some of the other programs you're seeing under attack.
And if I can make one, I guess, recommendation, while you're making adjustments to the program, highlight one challenge. One thing I've noticed is that I often look at the program as almost like an incubator, probably growing, creating opportunities for businesses, you know, so that they can grow out of the program, right, or still no longer need the program. One thing I recognize sometimes is we have some businesses that kind of bottleneck the growth, right, where you have the same MBE businesses getting majority of the work for years and years at a time and never necessarily growing out of it to create the opportunities for the next person. You know, they kind of just stay at the biggest they are and enough. Just one challenge while you're looking at changes, how can we kind of create an environment where more opportunities can go to a more diverse group of individuals rather than majority of the opportunities from the city going to the same few people, where people encourage folks to kind of grow out of the program, because there's a lot of minority women-owned businesses. Look, I love to do business with the city, but while we're meeting our numbers and our goals, it's kind of going to kind of the same folks sometimes.
No, that's an excellent observation. That definitely happens. So, with the program, one of the great things we have already within the law is that programs, so the Board of Estimates relies upon the SBA size standards for small businesses. The Board of Estimates approves the size standards that are applicable to the program. So, what that means is we use the NACE codes, the North American Industry Standard Classification Codes, to designate what work that small business does. So, any business within the program, per the SBA, we look at their five years of taxes to determine if they are too large for that particular code. So, a business can graduate per their NACE code or in their entirety of what they're certified for and then be out of the program, and that is precisely the goal. The goal is to take a minority and women-owned business that's local, small, to be able to get them to a point that they build up with public procurement, diversifying their work at the state level with our local universities, and also in private industry, that they get to the point for their code, if the cap is like 15.3 million, that they're now a $20 million business, they no longer need the benefit of the program. Now, we hope that they continue to work with the city, but their work will just no longer count if they're a minority business, for example, towards that MBE goal. But we want to see more and more businesses graduate. That's something that I put more diligence on. Under my leadership is making sure that we see businesses graduate for particular codes, and now with our software of B2G, it's an auto-capture of the taxes. So, once somebody has been certified, so doing their third certification term, so, because for two years, we'll have enough taxes when they go to renew the next go-around. Um, we'll have enough taxes when they go, go to renew the next go-around to be able to say whether they're actually out of, um, the program or not. I will say the other side to that is it used to be a three-year graduation rate. And SBA has now allowed folks to stay into the program, be considered small for a longer period of time. Um, that folks thought that they weren't benefiting enough from some of these programs that did have that, um, uh, that cap. On, on, on where they need to be to remain small, but that is something, um, that I think we can do. The other way that we're trying to grow, uh, our business pool is obviously certifying more businesses as MWBE, so doing a lot of outreach. Um, we've been partnering recent, recently with, uh, GoSpa at the state level, uh, to be able to get into, uh, uh, an even larger pool of businesses that may not already be certified with us. Um, the other thing I'll say that, that, um, is not within my purview, but it's something that, that we should definitely be looking to move towards as a city. Is best value for our contract awards, which is something that would need to be amended in the charter. Uh, thus would have to go to a vote of the people. But we missed the last charter amendment window, but I feel very, 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 very passionately, and the disparity study echoes, um, uh, this belief that I have. That best value is one of the best ways that we would be able to do more with local businesses, minority business, women-owned businesses. Because then we're not simply just looking at who, what big business is able to come in it with the bottom dollar. We can also think about how many Baltimoreans will they hire? What is the composition of their minority or women leadership within their company? What is their ability to satisfy goals or go over and above the goals that we set and take those things into account? And that's something where then we would have the, the legal basis to say, well, we're actually going to, although it'll cost us twenty thousand more to award to this vendor. We're going to do it because they're going to have seventy-five percent of their workforce be Baltimoreans. And that will be something that I think will really allow our economy to grow and for communities to thrive. When we're putting a focus on, uh, that even more so than our current local hiring.
Yep. No, I, I thank you for that work. Thank you for the work you do. Uh, and if I can make one official request for like any information on, I guess, how many, uh, companies have graduated out of the program? In the last, you know, let's say, whatever you feel like is a good number, ten years, fifteen years, I don't know. But, um, uh, in the last, let's say, ten years or so. But yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Long D and everybody from the team. Really grateful to have you all here with us today. Would you speak a little bit, first, I'm proud to say the first district we was lucky to have, is lucky to have two, two, uh, two Main Streets in it. I recognize that, uh, I'm sorry. Councilman Jones has an opinion. Uh, we have two Main Streets in it. We're really appreciative of that. Uh, and also really glad to see Park Heights, uh, coming online and, and I'm sure other, uh, important commercial districts, uh, joining the mix. Also really grateful to see the increase, uh, in funding. I know, um, for a long time it was maintained at kind of an astronomically low level. Um, and so appreciate that in recent years that's been increasing. Is there a, uh, if I'm correct, last year was sixty thousand?
That's correct.
And this year it's seventy-five.
No, uh, I'm sorry. So FY twenty-five was sixty, sixty thousand. Our current fiscal year is sixty.
Yeah, right. Sorry, last year, yeah. The, this current year that we're in is sixty, uh, and moving ahead it's seventy-five. I, is your, where do you think, I mean, recognize there's inflation in costs. It, but is seventy-five where it needs to be as you understand it? Or what are we aiming towards as, as we as a council think about how to support this moving forward?
So, uh, the, the aim that I was going for was a hundred thousand dollars. Um, I have made an enhancement request to, to get to that number. I'm very grateful that we're at seventy-five thousand and we were able to get to this, uh, uh, mark in the challenging budget times. I think a hundred thousand dollars is, um, at minimum our baseline floor. Um, when we've done, um, analysis that Director Nader and her team did in the, uh, fall. Uh, following, uh, last year's budget cycle, um, was looking at a lot of the urban Main Streets. So the challenge with Main Street America is that there's only so many urban Main Streets. They're looking to expand and have even more. Um, but there's only so much comparison that can be had about, um, what each program does. And when we see the urban Main Streets, they're making significantly larger, um, investments. A hundred, a hundred thousand was the floor. I be, I believe we saw folks as high as a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, per year. But I think, um, one thing I, I, I think that's important is that we do, that we do have some aspect of incrementalism. I, I will take a larger portion of the pie as we take those steps up. Um, but at the same time that we kind of see what we're actually able to operationalize in each of those communities. And that we continue to get an assessment of the needs, um, to ensure that we're, we are, you know, being responsible stewards of, of the funds. But I think a hundred thousand dollars would be a good place as we move forward to really see in twenty twenty-five dollars, how far that goes, um, in our communities.
No, I, I, I mean, I appreciate that insight and I concur again from, you know, I don't sit where you all sit, but, but walking alongside supporting, you know, the two Main Streets. In our area, it's one of those things that, um, you know, twenty-five K or fifty K. Until you reach the threshold of kind of that minimum, you, you're, you're not in any way getting close to the full benefit of what, what an actual Main Street program can be, right? It's, you don't, you don't get half of a Main Street. You don't get seventy-five percent of it. You just, you don't, don't get much because there's not enough energy and resources there to, to implement the, the great program that we're trying to achieve. Um, so appreciate the progress made there. Appreciate the, the mayoral administration for including an increase, you know, the last few years. And, uh, certainly expect that, that that number will continue to go up and that you'll find support here on the council for that. My, my second question has, I mean, I, I know you've referenced this already, but there's this, there's this great overlap between, uh, minority and women-owned businesses and the Main Street program, right? Because so many of our, and small businesses, because so many of our businesses in these commercial districts, whether they're official Main Street or not. Um, are founded by women and people of color and immigrants and refugees. Um, and there's, there's, there's cultural diversity there, but also barriers. There's communication diversity, but also barriers there. Um, are there particular efforts to help, um, immigrant refugee-owned businesses navigate this? Navigate the city contracting process? So, so I know we're supporting them on the Main Streets, you know, up and down Broadway and on Eastern Avenue and elsewhere. But what's, what's the crossover from kind of those folks to, um, to, to become vendors with the city or, or helping them navigate that process?
Oh, yeah. So, um, uh, that, that's something we, we'd be definitely focused on. Um, we've got our, uh, Chief of Communications, Elroy Bynum. Um, that's something he works very extensively on our language access program to make sure that all of our forms, all of our guidance, um, is multilingual. Um, and that we have the support for, for folks to do so. Um, it's also something, um, Director Nader being of, uh, Puerto Rican descent and, and being, uh, uh, fluent in Spanish. And being able to, um, have a lot of connections to that community, um, that we really try to assist. Um, we're also working in, uh, and have been working in partnership, but looking to work in even closer partnership with, uh, MEMA. Um, to make sure, um, you know, like, like in the past, I've done their, um, uh, New Americans presentation. To make sure they're aware of all the, the resources that we have at the agency and all the ways that we can help them if they're looking to be entrepreneurs, to start a business. Um, so we're trying to do even more. And I know, um, Director Campbell is going to be doing some, um, more targeted, um, events for some communities that we haven't had events for in the past. So we're looking to have, um, upcoming events that are focused on our, um, Hispanic, uh, business community, also, um, our Asian-American business community. To ensure that it's, it's, it feels as inclusive as, um, all of our minorities within, um, uh, the Baltimore community. And that people really know that we're also, uh, focused on, uh, them as business owners and see their value.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Director. Always good to see you.
You as well. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, I want to just lift up two things I heard. One, from Councilman Jones about the need to diversify the portfolio and identify Main Streets that have not always been traditionally considered Main Streets for Baltimore. I think it's a really good point. And I, I totally realize that funding is limited. Um, but as we think about being a city where every neighborhood thrives, where we don't have parts of our town that are left behind, where we're rehabbing and rebuilding vacant and abandoned housing. I really think it's important for us to identify new opportunities in this space. Because one way or the other, uh, Baltimore is a small business town. It's a gritty town. It's got some of the best restaurants, I say this in this chamber and anywhere I go in the world. It's got, uh, just good energy, good vibes, good grit, good toughness behind its creativity and entrepreneurship. And so I do think we should be looking, Holland's Market's not a Main Street right now, is it?
No, sir.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what, you know, again, I'm seeing an emerging, uh, you know, Councilman Bullock has done outstanding work. The, uh, Councilman Porter too, Rudy Ruttisery, the, the market that's been stood up over there. I mean, that's, that to me is where, you know, we should really think about, is there an opportunity for some additional support, uh, from this office? As one. The second thing is, I think to Councilman Parker's point. I, I, I would be interested in whether Smabad or are your office? Has really thought about what the differential is in terms of like our Main Streets programs that are doing really well versus those that are not? I know in some of the corridors, it's been a true, true, true blessing. And I will just lift up in Councilman Parker's district, Highland Town, um, as a great example. Um, and, and, and one of my theories is that having the backstop of the Southeast CDC, having that level of support. Having a whole staff that is checked in on Amanda, who does an absolutely outstanding job.
Yes.
And, and that she's been consistent and in her job for a very long time, has just positioned her to win. In a very, to the councilman's point, diverse community with a lot. Predominantly, I'm going to say immigrant-owned businesses, women-owned businesses. I mean, it, it is just like, and it's beautiful. And you walk down Eastern Ave, you're hearing four languages, you can eat food from anywhere in the world. Um, it's a really beautiful thing. And my hunch is that part of how she's successful is that she has great support from Southeast CDC. And that not all of our Main Streets do. And so when the councilman's talking about, is it enough funding? I think it is both a question of funding, but also a question of support. Um, and, and, and where that Main Street, like what the anchor is, is holding it down. So wanted to know if you all had done some analysis just about like where we're seeing success versus where other official Main Streets are struggling?
Yeah, uh, uh, you, you gave, you gave me a lot to say more on there, uh, uh, Mr. President. But yes, um, let me see. So in terms of new opportunities, um, I, I, I think you raised a good point. I think where we're moving is to, uh, really explore working with those additional communities. We have, um, several already identified that, uh, have been reaching out, that are, um, very active in their communities that want more support. Really, we're going to be looking at whether, um, it'll just be literally us supporting and helping initiatives, raising up with promotion and working with those communities. Or if it's going to be a more concretely, um, uh, solidified affiliate program. Um, where it would be a bit of similar to what I was getting at before, but kind of an official on-ramp that based on certain thresholds and things being met over the course of time, that they would be next up with, if you will. Or at least in the pool of, uh, considered applicants, uh, when the funding was available. So trying to move in a direction like that where there would not necessarily be the gap of the time and funding nexus before we are able to offer any additional support to those areas. Um, in terms of the, uh, stratification of the program, in terms of, uh, uh, um, who is, is really excelling and things like that. So one of the challenges we have there is, um, excellent example, uh, for Highland Town. Um, we, we're so appreciative of the work, um, Carla, Amanda, uh, their entire team are doing in that area. Um, um, they, they are an excellent example of folks that are thriving and doing well. Um, so we're very, very appreciative to have them, um, in the program. I think the challenge is because they're all independent nonprofits. They have sometimes embedded or chosen to be independent from some of those organizations. And we see more and less control and activity of some of those boards. Um, so I, I, I think a lot of that sometimes is, is a challenge for us. I think one of the things that we've been trying to do is to, um, emphasize certain aspects of organization with the board. Really reiterating the level of commitment and activity that we want to see out of board members to allow those c- uh, communities to thrive. Also trying to facilitate more conversations amongst the communities. So there's more, um, cohesive note sharing, if you will, and, and so that folks can say Highland Town, um, or Hamilton-Lorerville. What are you doing with your land development strategies that you're able to get these developments? You're able to, um, attract in additional investors that are coming to your area and you're really looking more forward? Um, so what we're trying to do is, um, with some of our transformation strategies now is really, um, this year, uh, spending considerable time really develop. Just meeting with the communities and trying to develop their unique character from a promotional standpoint. Um, so one of the things we're going, we're going to be doing with the podcast is allowing each community to come on and, and have that opportunity for, um, you know, Amanda and, and, and Highland Town to tell their story, to talk about the uniqueness of their, their neighborhoods, talk about their character and what you find in Highland Town and why you would want to be there. But why that's different from Pennsylvania Avenue. And, and if there's historical aspects, um, one of the things we're trying to look at is ways to, um, uplift and even seek out grants and additional funding. That's to preserve, um, African-American history in some of our historical neighborhoods. Um, and that's unfortunately some of the neighborhoods that haven't, um, gotten to certain levels within the program. Um, from Pennsylvania Avenue, um, um, uh, uh, Bella Edison, you know, even, even where Park Heights is transitioning. We want to continue to make, um, those investments in those communities, but also uplift what is there. Um, sometimes we have challenges with the established commercial corridor and focusing on that. But trying to find other ways that we can promote, uh, placemaking. Um, because there's a lot of, uh, uh, you know, something we experienced when we were, um, in Philadelphia for Main Street America was like bike tours. Um, that we can do as a way to get active, to let people see the city and also learn history about some of our unique characters and neighborhoods. Um, of trying to do things like that. Uh, one of the things we're doing with the Great Chase that we've been able to highlight. Um, we're just getting started with that. Some of those, uh, landmarks and monuments are in those communities that people may not be familiar with, uh, uh, in some areas of the city. And get people there so they can really experience those things and trying to just find more things in collaboration with the community to highlight people physically coming to their location. And giving more of an overview of what you're going to expect. So one of the things we have is the Visit Baltimore on the website. They've done a few of our, um, communities. So we have additional guides there. Um, some of the work BDC is going to be doing. We're going to, you know, continue to include that. Um, one of the other things we're going to be working with, uh, Deputy Campbell's working, um, on. Um, is we're going to be really, uh, rolling out to try to make sure all of our MBE businesses and NWBE businesses, uh, um, that qualify are in the, um, US Black Chamber By Black Network. Um, we're one of their limited cities in their initial run that they're listing, um, black-owned businesses. I'd love to be able to make sure all of our businesses are listed there and from a tourism standpoint, be able to really identify where folks can go. If they want to support those types of businesses and really then be able to kind of get a better understanding of some of those businesses that are in some of those, uh, 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 communities that folks don't always think about.
I appreciate that. Um, last point I want to make, uh, something that the chair has been emphasizing for many, many, many years. Um, and cut me off if you already said something like this, is the importance of our middle neighborhoods. And that at times, middle neighborhoods get left behind in the public conversation. There's a lot of focus and just market energy around some of our thriving neighborhoods. And then there's, uh, a lot of work to be done that, um, often the city steps in to do around neighborhoods that have been historically disinvested. Uh, there has not been a commensurate investment in retaining, uh, legacy, black neighborhood residents and businesses. It's often felt like that is a group that doesn't get the same kind of investment energy from the city as other groups do. And so wondering how you all are thinking about our middle neighborhoods who, that is, as the chair has made this point before. That is the population that we are losing in the city of Baltimore and that has been an anchor for our city. And, you know, we, we want everyone to come. We want everyone to, we want our city to grow. But if we continue to lose that population of residents, that's not good for the overall stability and for our goal of being able to both grow rapidly, but also retain the folks that built this city.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think that's one of those things that, um, some of that neighborhood analysis. Um, and really looking at what communities need and trying to bolster those needs, whether that's, um, additional businesses that need to get in there. Or, or just giving greater support to businesses that have been there. Because the challenge we have is, um, we do have some historically, um, active businesses that sometimes do go away. Um, based on the lack of ongoing support over the course of time that people really love, they've been meaningful to the community and then they're gone. And sometimes that remains a vacant, uh, uh, place for an extended period of time. So we're, we're trying to do everything we can, um, to do, um, promotion of the existing businesses. We're trying to do a lot this year of really trying to, um, give as much free promotion as we can in digital content. So those businesses are able to utilize that, um, on their websites, on their socials, um, for commercials and things like that, to extend weekends. So we can give them that support, um, to allow them to do more when they are already there. Um, I think the other piece will be to actually, um, have a lot of intentionality of where we're trying to drive folks to with vacant commercial, um, uh, uh, properties. And really trying to look at, uh, what is consequential, um, in terms of where we can locate that business in that community. And, and kind of can we get them to the tipping point if we were able to put, um, these particular type of businesses in these locations that would really bolster the community and, and give? these particular type of businesses in these locations that would really bolster the community and give them the type of resources that they need. Director Nader, if you wanted to add to that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, President Cohen. I would like to also share that one of the things that we have worked on with moving to more placemaking setting is making sure that all of our nine Main Streets are extremely unique. And so what we may see in one Main Street could probably be completely different than what's needed in a different Main Street. So we are working closely with each executive director and manager and making sure that we get an idea and a survey of what exactly is it that they need? What are the things that are keeping them from being able to be more successful, bringing more people to the community and making sure those vacancies start to get filled? And once we get that information, then we are, as you mentioned with Amanda, who was phenomenal and SECDC, they do have more support. So what we're doing is making sure that we're partnering with the agencies that we do have and the people that are boots on the ground, instead of it being more silo, just all of us coming together so that we can help those businesses and those communities thrive more. So that's one of the ways that we're working with specific Main Streets like Pennsylvania Avenue. What do you need and how can we help you and how can we bring some other partners that are doing similar work maybe right within your Main Street and you don't know? So us as the mayor's office is the voice to make sure we connect and all those veins are going out, but we're all coming back together so that we can reach some goals and these Main Streets, especially the middle neighborhoods that don't get as much attention or they have more needs, we're making sure we're amplifying them and helping them in their specific areas. I want to lastly share something like Bella Edison, we're working closely with them as well. And we are meeting with every single Main Street, bringing in council members, stakeholders, people in the community to start addressing the problems that they're having and how we can help them so that we could diminish that and have more thriving neighborhoods instead of dealing with just the issues, helping fix some of that so that we can help them thrive more and have more businesses in those neighborhoods and less vacancies.
And that's where like the totality of the circumstances comes into play with our partners. That some of the issues we're dealing with that we see in our commercial corridors really spill over into the community and they're really issues that aren't just limited to why a business isn't able to stay open or why a business is having challenges in the evening after a certain hour. Those are community challenges. And if they have someone hanging in front of their commercial establishment, they may also have drug activity that's down the street from their home that's also going on. That's kind of making the community have struggles and making visitors want to be few and far between because that's the perception that they have. So we've really been trying to bring together everyone within the community that has a stake at it to really be able to say, how can we come up with more of a cohesive strategy? Like Charlotte was saying, not so much in those silos where we're divided off and things are just happening and we're all trying to do good work, but really trying to be much more intentional and look at what are the things that we can highlight, what are the ways that we can do to make it so that it's not really a commercial broken window situation where those vacancies really lead to the degradation and dilapidation of the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. As a quick follow up, it's just a very simple question. Are you guys engaged with the mayor's office's middle neighborhood strategy plan?
Yes, but I will say we're not like at the forefront of controlling that strategy.
What role or what program within their toolkit or within their strategy is your agency involved in? Is there a specific program or?
I don't know. I don't believe it is a specific program. I think it's just kind of generalized support right now. It's something that I know we need to try to find a way to engage further to see how we can assist specifically in that regard. But I know the plan, I believe, may predate where we were in the administration. Some of the work has been done. So that may be some of it. But we definitely would love to be way more involved in the plan and see how it ties into both the Main Streets program and also overall business and community development.
Okay, thank you. We are going to, we're in recess. We thank you and your entire team for the work that you are doing. Although Bella Edison's Main Street program does not overlap within my district. Because of how economic development works, it is still important because I share a portion of the community. So thank you definitely for the work that you're doing within that neighborhood and all of our Main Streets. We are officially in recess. We're going to be coming back at 2:00 PM for DOT.